Here we go. The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, September 22nd is now called to order. Mr. Paulson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes?
Here.
And Chair Kane?
Here. I would ask that everyone stand and join Commissioner Badami in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is with our United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the Town Council and citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Prior to a commission meeting, written comments concerning agenda items may be submitted to staff. They are always welcome and helpful. At meetings of the commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda, and any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated. Turn the card into staff, and please print your name clearly. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Commissioner Hudes?
Earlier today, we had a meeting of the Historic Preservation Committee, and we considered two items. 1-6940 Roberts Road, where we approved removal from the Historic Resource Inventory, and 221 Almendra, where we provided some feedback about construction.
Who else serves on that committee with you?
Okay, so Commissioner O'Donnell, Len Pacheco, Bob Cowan, and Nancy Durham.
Thank you. Other committee reports. We move then to verbal communications. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any item not on the agenda. For anyone who intends to speak, I ask you to come up to the podium, adjust the microphone, and state your name and address for the record. In fairness to all who want to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any cards?
We do not.
This is for items. Anyone who wishes to speak on items on the agenda may wish to turn in a card as well. So we move to the consent calendar. Items on consent may be acted upon by a single motion, but before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or the commission may request that the item be removed. Tonight, we have one item on consent: approval of the minutes of the September 12, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a request to pull the item, or is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Birch?
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Janoff? Second. Okay. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Minutes are approved unanimously. We move to the public hearings portion of our agenda. Consider item two, which is 248 Jared Lane Architecture Site Application S16054, requesting approval for construction of a new single-family residence and removal of large protected trees on vacant property zoned HR1. This is APN 53234071. The property owner and applicant is Sam Pan. The project planner is Sean Mullen, and this item was continued from the April 11, 2018, and the June 27, 2018 commission meetings. May I show of hands from commissioners who have visited the property? Are there any disclosures? Yes, Commissioner?
I was absent from the first hearing that was continued. I believe that was April 11, and I viewed the video of that, so I feel like I am current with that. And while I was reviewing that video, I binged on Planning Commission tapes and viewed the March 9, 2011, and also the April 27, 2011 hearings on the same property.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mullen, would you give us a report?
Thank you, Chair Kane. Before you tonight is a continued request to construct a new single-family residence and remove large protected trees on vacant property at 248 Jared Lane. As Chair Kane stated, the Planning Commission first considered the application on April 11 of this year and continued the item to allow the applicant time to provide more information on grading as it relates to the driveway, continue outreach to their neighbors, consider building within the LRDA, or reduce the encroachments outside of the LRDA, and consider reducing the massing. The applicant has provided a response based on the direction received from the commission in the form of changes or revisions to the plans, as well as new information. Regarding grading, the applicant revised the driveway design with changes to the cut and fill quantities and locations. The net result is a reduction in the driveway slope from 19.53% to 15%, which also eliminates one of the previously requested exceptions. The revised driveway also reduces the maximum height of the retaining walls. Previously, they were at a maximum height of 14.2 feet. They've reduced by 5.9 feet down to 8.3 feet at their maximum height, with the maximum standard in the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines being five feet. So there's still an exception requested there, but the extent of the exception has been reduced. The applicant has also provided some new information that compares the previously approved 2011 application to the current proposal. The comparisons are relative to the extent outside the LRDA the two projects went, and the amassing comparison. And as you can see in front of you, the applicant has prepared a scale model to aid in the review of the application. The model helps demonstrate the massing of the building and the screening provided by the existing trees. And lastly, Attachment 16, Chair Staff Report, shows continued outreach to the neighbors for the project. The project continues to include several requests for exceptions, although one has been eliminated from the previous iteration. The exceptions to the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines include development outside the LRDA, retaining walls with heights exceeding five feet, and lengths exceeding 50 feet, and grading exceeding maximum allowable cut and fill depths. This is mostly related to the driveway and the access to the site. Based on the analysis provided in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the architectural site application subject to the conditions contained in your staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. We are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Commissioners, questions for staff? I have a foundation question. Your report indicates a large number of protected trees are going to fall by the wayside. Give me a primer on what is a protected tree? Why do we call it a protected tree if we're going to cut it down?
A protected tree under an architecture and site application, or a planning application, is any tree with a breast diameter height of four inches or more. So that is a pretty small tree. The definition of protected tree changes based on the application for a building permit. It can be species-specific and size-specific. In this case, there's 57 protected trees proposed for removal. Three, in addition to that, are large protected trees. And the applicant, through working with staff and kind of understanding the evolution of the project, has indicated that they're going to do their best to minimize the removal of trees. There may be fewer, but we're taking a conservative approach.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I'll now open the public--
You have one question.
I didn't see it. Commissioner Badami?
I have another one for staff. So you had mentioned that most of the cut-and-fill issues had been resolved, that it related to the driveway?
The cut-and-fill has been changed, has been revised, and the net result is that the driveway is not as steep. Previously, it was over 19.5%. And they got, by relocating some of the cut-and-fill quantities and changing the grading for the driveway, it's now down to a maximum slope of 15%. Most of that was due to the initial turn-off of Jared Lane, originally dipped down a little bit, and then rose back up, which shortened the run necessary to get to the rise to the top. So they were able to change that. Some of the quantities actually increased, but they also moved around relative under the garage, or driveway.
Okay, so my question is, the house footprint, the driveway reduction with the cut-and-fill that he appeared to resolve, we still have a triple allowable cut for the house footprint. So has--
Well, the house footprint has a maximum grading depth for a house with just a regular foundation of eight feet. This project includes a cellar, and cellars are exempt from that eight-foot limitation. So there is a 24-foot maximum cut. It is for a cellar, so it doesn't meet, it's not in excess of what would be allowed by the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions? Vice Chair Hudes?
The applicant raised a question about a design comparison between 2011 approved and 2018 pending. To what degree do we take the 2011 application, approved or not, into consideration as we're looking at this application?
The 2011 application has no bearing on this application. The comparison came partly from the discussion at the last Planning Commission meeting. There was some talk of the previous application, so the applicant wanted to show that what was previously approved actually was outside the LRDA to a greater extent, and wanted to provide a massing comparison. There was some discussion about that at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hanson?
I had a follow-up question on Commissioner Badami's question. So if I understood what your response was, that the maximum allowed, in our Hillside Design Guidelines, the maximum allowed cut is eight feet, and that the difference between the 24 and the eight, all 16 feet, was due to their cellar?
That's correct. So we like to make a distinction between excavation, which we tie to the foundations or a cellar, and cut-and-fill when we discuss it with applicants. Their cut-and-fill depths, which is what's happening outside the footprint of the building, are within the limitations of the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. The excavation for the cellar, the cellar portion of below-grade square footage is exempt from that eight-foot excavation limit. So if this were somehow to be a house where they were going to grade down the top of the, or excavate down the top of the hill, and not put a cellar in there, and that cut depth was going to be 15 feet, that would not line up with the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. But because there's a cellar, they're exempt from that.
Okay, one final question. Was our cellar policy in place in 2011? I believe it was.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for 10 minutes. Who is representing tonight? Your name and address, sir.
Good evening, the member of the Planning Commission. My name's Sam Pan, the owner of 248 Jared Lane. I bought this property in February of 2016 because it was so fascinated. I have no hesitation with the very fast entitlement because of research from the city records showed that a previous permit has been approved but expired and required to file a new applications. Architect Steve Young Ho has experienced a similar SDR process located at 17390 High Street a few years ago, so we decided to present a plan mimics to the previous one approved in 2011, especially for the footprints of the house and its driveway. Since the goal of the Hillside Development Standard and the guideline are not easily achievable, therefore, our design has relatively reduced the size of the living space compared with the previous approved plan, which most details, illustrations have been presented fully in the submitted justification letter. My home design got indoor lap pool. This relates with a private story I'd like to share with you now. I had a serious spine and pelvis injury in the past work from the work. In order to remain a healthier life, my doctor recommended a low-impact workout with a high-impact result, that is to have swimming daily. Set aside the area of this lap pool, the remaining living space is merely about 4,000 square feet, which is regarded very comparable with those houses in my community. One of the Hillside Design Goal is to conserve natural landscape as much as we can. Preserving oak tree is the most, topmost priority for me. Ho is owner, builder, with more than 20 years' experience, licensed the general contract, and will endeavor to provide all possible techniques and methods, including hand-digging and preserve majority oaks out of these 57, which shall indicate, you know, to be felled. One good instance in the tree number 66, condition is a failed-to-good oak tree. A decent candidate as my future backyard, 15 feet cannot be shaded to cool my deck. However, you probably can see from the model, I put the tree on there. It's located against the rule of the grading and engineer claims removal. On the contrary, it's on my list to save it, no matter what takes me to do. By the same token, if I can apply this theory to the other numerous trees labeled domed, so their ability to survive is highly possible. This would greatly benefit not only my life living there, living here for years to come, but also contribute to a sustainable environment with which it could meet that goal ultimately. Adjacent neighbors have contacted me to ensure their concern would be addressed as hearing takes place again. It reveals that privacy is what they really need. Currently, the mitigation that I have learned from at least two neighbors is to plant additional trees between my property and theirs. To aid visual effect, a scale model made by myself is being presented in front of you, so you can now discuss, we can now discuss, the privacy in the comfortable environment, and it can be concluded. Armed commissioners, neighbors, and I, assuming the pattern or the distribution of the preserved tree cannot provide desirable privacy to these two neighbors, additional tree in terms of the locations, sizes, and number of them plus others, if any, can be spot easily on the model as whole to satisfy their concern. I'm really grateful to have knowledgeable staffs working with capable design teams up to this moment. I also know that each one of your commissioner has given us very meaningful suggestion. I sincerely appreciate your efforts and directions. From the bottom of my heart, wishing this round of the meeting tonight will have the win-win outcome for the Town of Los Gatos and me. At last, if it's allowable, I will be cordially invited over my property at the later date to witness what the promise I and my team delivered today. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see if there are any questions. Questions for the speaker? Vice Chair Hudes?
Thank you very much for your presentation and for your attention to the trees. And so I had some questions about trees, really two questions. One is about the trees that are going to be retained. I had difficulty reading the tree numbers on the plan. This has happened before, and it's, the numbers are obscured or illegible on the document. So I will submit a note afterwards about, if I can see a more legible version of this, of some specific trees that I wondered if they were possible to retain. And there's about a dozen trees there. So that's one question. I've had, you know, difficulty reading some of this with the shaded numbers on the trees. And despite the fact I went through the 90 pages of the tree reports as well, but I think finally, this is what we have to look at.
Okay.
The second, so would you be willing to consider some feedback on some of the specific trees, I guess is my question?
Okay. Actually, on the model, some of the tree I tried to save, the number of the tree are already right on the model. Most of the case, the tree roots grading, it cannot be changed, not necessary to change. That kind of a tree, and I really want to save it. Like the one I mentioned, the number 66, actually, it would be on my new deck, but the grading, it will be keep the same. It don't need to dig it more, or it's not raised up. So of course, I know if the roots exposed, or you put the mortar to bury it, and then the tree, it won't be survived. But, you know, most of the tree I tried to survive, I would like to say maybe half of the 57 I may can make it. I cannot promise, you know, I would try my best, you know?
Well, I'll send you a list if you would be willing to consider that, once I see a legible plan. The second question is, there are these clouds that are drawn around trees, and it says, "Intent to preserve trees within this limits. However, removal may result due to construction impact." And there's several of these clouds. I'm looking at C7, the land use, tree removal and protection plan. And I am, I question whether you can really submit an application with 27 trees that are not one way or the other. So typically, we see an application where a tree either is being removed or preserved, and then there may be a few, but 27 additional trees are in these clouds. And so would you be willing to respond and be more specific about those 27, which ones you intend to save? Because at this rate, it's a big question for me. You'd be willing to do that?
Yeah, of course, you know. I would like to say, since the slope is about more than 25%, so most likely, the equipment or the person, it won't stay on that when we have the construction. It's not easy to stay on that, you know, but maybe some loose dirt, it may falling down, and anything is possible. So the only thing I can promise, you know, for that 27 tree, and also, I would try my best and don't try not to touch it. If it's loose dirt, if already built the roots, and then I will use hand and ask my guy to clean it, and of course, you know, we will put the fence to block it, and maybe the fence will stop the dirt to falling down.
Right. No, I understand that, but in addition to the 57 you've identified, there appear to be another 27 additional. And so I would ask you if you'd be willing to respond to those particular trees as well.
Okay. Yeah, definitely. I would try to save, don't touch this 27, and also, I would try to save more, in which is on the plan, is say we are going to remove it.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Other questions? Commissioner Hanson?
I wanted to thank you for all the materials you submitted comparing the existing proposal, the revisions that you made, as well as comparing it to the proposal that was approved back in 2011. But after reviewing all that, I was left still with one big question. The proposal as it stands now is a bit smaller than the house that was proposed and approved in 2011. And you compared the driveways and everything else, but what was really causing me some questions was the grading in excavation. Because the excavation, this house is not that much smaller than the other house. The driveway is situated a little bit differently, but the, in your own-- the driveway is situated a little bit differently, but the, in your own document on C two, it says, "The grading for the new building will require twenty-eight hundred and ninety-one cubic yards of excavation and three hundred and fifty-two cubic yards of embankment. The previously approved plans include seven hundred and ninety-three cubic." So I'm, I'm just trying to understand in my mind, since the house isn't that dramatically different, there was a cellar in the previous house, why is there going to be three times as much, more than three times as much of excavation? I, I just was trying to understand that.
I guess the reason is because our house is two feet lower compared to 2011 for the, the overall, is two feet lower. So that's why maybe the cutting dirt is more, this is only my guess, because you know, my civil engineer, he's not here today. I don't know my explanation is right or not. Yeah, but I real, I know our house compared to 2011 is two, in two feet lower.
Okay.
Maybe it will cost for that, you know.
Okay. So that, that would have been helpful to have your civil engineer here today, but I'll, I'll take that as, you know, that, that's a possible reason for the difference, even though it's three, more than three times, those extra two feet. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Perhaps you can help me remember, but if I remember correctly, in 2011, the garage was outside of the house, and the proposal at this point, I think, is to sink the garage within and under the, the living part of the house?
Yes, you're right. Because 2011, the garage is more outside, so it's without the cutting, right?
Right.
Now, we moved to the inside because L R D A, so we need to move the in, inside. Otherwise, the, I remember the whole garage for the 2011 is, most of them is outside of the L R D A.
Well, the, the fact that you did that, and I understand why you did it, would of course produce more dirt, more excavation, wouldn't it? Because you were, if you look at the house now, and you've got a garage on, on the bottom, it's a garage, then you've got two stories on top of it, it has the visual impact of three stories. I know it's not, but because the garage is sunk, which you did do, try to deal with the L R D A problem, you have more excavation, I believe, and you have more height visibility. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Well, seeing none at this time, thank you. I'm going to see if there's any members of the public who wish to address the commission. I do not have any cards, but I think we have some speakers. Sir, the speakers will get, the speakers will get three minutes, and after each one of them is done, you'll have an, an additional five to comment on anything that was said.
My card there. We met six months ago, Stevie Yan Architect, and basically, I don't want to reiterate whatever Sean said, in terms of the direction we're supposed to dig in.
Excuse me, sir. I'm going to need a clarification from staff. If, if you're part of the application, then, then, well, you clarify it for me, Mr. Paulson.
Yeah, so the, the time that the applicant has for the ten minutes and the five minutes is, includes members of your team. So you'll have time when they come back up for the five-minute rebuttal, after we hear from the public to offer any comments in that five minutes.
Do I have time now?
You don't.
All right.
Thank you. Mary Martin.
I live at two-five-four Vista Del Monte, which is, excuse me, the house that would have the most view of this house, so my main concern is how it will look. And I was a little concerned when I read this sentence in the document, said, "The applicant has not revised the design or siding of the proposed residence." And I recall at the last meeting, someone said, "We have pictures that say, 'Don't do this,' and this pic, this plan looks just like that picture." So that's my concern. That's all.
Questions for the speaker. Commissioner Birch.
Did you have an opportunity to speak with the applicant between meetings?
They came to my house a couple of times, I think.
And did you get a chance to, you know, voice your concerns about the massing that you would have visible from your home?
Yeah.
Okay, and do you feel, I know the solution of planting trees has been put out there, do you feel like that will help you with the visibility?
Yeah, I see trees now, and I would like to see trees as opposed to a hulking mansion.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Genov.
Thank you. Is your house one of those shown on the model?
Um, let me look.
This is probably.
I can't see which one you're pointing to, is that the corner or?
No, no, the corner. Yeah. It's two-five-four.
It's here, your policy is here.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I'm right here.
Okay.
Yes, it's Michael's, yeah. You're here, yes, yes.
Okay, so could you clarify, following the discussions you had with the homeowner, regarding the proposed design, which hasn't changed since our last meeting, were you satisfied with their response that they would plant and/or retain trees? Or are you still concerned that the massing of the home itself will be a, a visual concern?
Well, I'm, I'm concerned. I mean, I had no idea how, how it had been revised since.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for the speaker? Commissioner Birch.
I have one more, sorry. More, listen, I, on, you have the staff report, so on this sheet P four, it has comparable west side views from the previous application, which again, was a standalone application, where, I know it's independent of this, and the current. Were you living in your home in 2011?
We were.
Did you have a chance to look at, at this particular massing where they moved the garage out to the front to make it not look quite like a three-story?
Well, it seems like it will be, excuse me, lower than that other one.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much. We have one other speaker, Mr. Rudolph.
Yeah, Alan Rudolph, two-five-eight Jared Lane. I think I'm neighbor A on the designation. As I mentioned last time, the only concern I have is that I'm a little bit worried about emergency access and parking on Jared Lane. So I asked last time if a condition could be made to prohibit parking during construction. I think it's only prudent, especially given all the fires that have been taking place this summer. So the biggest problem would be getting up the hill to put the fire out if it's up there. Twice as a stu, as a student, both in high school and college, we had fires there, and both times, the pumper had to get up to the top of the hill and pump water out of our swimming pool to put the fire out. So anyhow, I'm just concerned about possible parking on Jared Lane. I know Sam says he's going to try and keep people off, and I'm sure he will, but you know, you've got so many subcontractors, that probably some of the workers aren't going to hear. And once you get a couple of trucks there, it gets to be very, very dangerous. That's all I've got. Thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Sure.
Is there some way we can, if it hasn't already been done, is there some way we can put, address these concerns in the conditions for approval?
Kevin Bagley Engineering, yes, there's already a condition of approval, I believe, condition of approval sixty-five, which states that construction vehicles will not be allowed to park on Jared Lane without prior approval from the town engineer.
Would you make a note to address that later on with Mr. Rudolph, please?
I will.
Zach Edmonds? Are they going to come with you?
I'm going to tell you, hey.
They'll be great on the camera.
I'm Zach Edmonds. I live at two-forty-nine Vista Del Monte, and my home is on the model there. I don't know which, which letter it is. I have two concerns. One is, we're directly down a pretty steep hill from the proposed development, and I just wanted to understand what measures may be taken to prevent items that may roll down the hill during construction. My children play in the, in the yard, there's a small fence that separates our property. So that's my, my first question. And my second question is whether story poles could be placed for the actual access itself for the driveway, for line of sight from my property, to see exactly where the driveway will be and what we'll be looking at.
Question for staff, do the conditions of approval address safety measures during construction?
Typically, our construction best management, or the construction management plan requires that sites maintain, you know, tidy, tidy sites, that could, you could add some language to that if amenable.
All right, thank you. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Birch.
I recall you were here at the last meeting, and weren't you, didn't you speak, okay. One of your neighbors then, that was on that street, spoke about this similar, and there were two aspects that they brought up. One, obviously, it's a steep slope, so while people are working up there, keeping it safe, but they had also asked about just erosion from tree removal and, and rainfall. Have you had an opportunity to meet with the applicant between the last meeting and this meeting?
I had not.
Okay. Have you had any opportunity to read any of the language from the last that addressed at least the erosion and some of the safety measures that we discussed in that meeting?
I'll be honest, I have not.
Okay. And so then, can I ask one last question about this? Would you feel comfortable if, in addition to the standard clean site conditions, there was fencing provided at the base of the hill, so that your yard would not be impacted by anything that rolled down?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Someone else have their hand up? No? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm just thinking about your other request of story polling the, the road, that, that's not going to happen, I don't believe, but you have drawings, and I realize drawings are not as good as being out there and seeing it. I'm trying to think of how we could address your concern. I don't, I don't believe in staff, I'll defer to staff on that, but one, I don't think the timing is right, and two, I don't think we normally, I don't believe we story poll roads, to my knowledge, but there would be nothing to have prevented marking the road with, with some kind of marking. My problem is, the matter is before us now, and we can make a decision this evening, and I'm sure the applicant hopes we do. If we make a decision, then all those things are over. So I just point that out to you, so you won't think we're ignoring you, but I, I will look to my fellow commissioners to see if there's any way to respond to your concern which would be effective. At the moment, I can't think of one. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Genov.
Since we have beautifully constructed, three-dimensional, presumably accurate model in front of us, looking at the location of your property relative to the proposed design, can you, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard because we're up here and, and the scale person will be pretty small, but can you get a sense of whether your concerns about the location of the driveway are still concerns or are mitigated by the model?
I'd love to spend some time with the model after the meeting. Hopefully, that'll be allowable.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much, sir. We have another speaker.
Hello there.
Welcome back.
I'm Michael McDonough, two-five-three Vista Del Monte, right below. The only thing I want to bring up today is, while they're doing construction, we had some flooding from the drainage system, you know, from the stream, when I first moved in about two years ago from New York. And I'd like to say during construction, that we, if not already mentioned, that it's well documented, that it's with erosion or whatever, that the thoroughfare, the water runoff is kept clean, so we don't have a repeat in that. And that's, that's what I'd like to bring up today. I don't think it's a big ask, and it's something pretty easily to, to accommodate.
All right, let me ask again. Do we have conditions of approval that address that concern?
The conditions would already cover it in their, in their erosion control requirements to keep, keep site erosion contained.
You may want to review later what those are.
Yeah, I did give it a shot the first time, and I didn't see that specifically called out, I don't know if there's an addendum, but I did look and search for that, and unfortunately could not find that.
All right.
So I'm interested specifically in the drain pipe that links the bottom part to two-fifty-three, that is between myself and Zach's home. I don't want to see that get on, but I think it's easily remediated. I don't think it's a big, big ask.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do not have other speaker cards, so I will return to the applicant and give him five minutes to say any additional comments he wishes.
Chair, Vice Chair, and a member of each commissioners, good evening. I just repeated that about six months ago, we met together and talking this project. We follow your directions to come back to present.
I'm sorry to interrupt. May I have your name and address?
Oh, sorry, Steve Yan, Architect. Okay. Sorry. So hopefully, we, I don't want to reiterate whatever Sean mentioned, as far as the exceptions, that hopefully tonight, we can get approval from a grading, driveway, privacy, trees, preservation, massing, all presented in detail on those justification letter. I hope everybody here has a chance to review them. I hope I'm standing here, if you have some doubt and question, please raise your hands. So tonight, I hope we can get a win-win situation between you and the owner, and I'll be glad to answer all question you have, hopefully.
Do we have questions for the speaker? Commissioner Badami.
At our last hearing, we gave direction on a few issues in addition to the driveway, and thank you very much for resolving that one. But one of the issues we did have was with massing. And one of the speakers, Ms. Martin, the town architect, and Commissioner Hanson in particular, had referenced Exhibit Eight, which was a town architect report, that the scale and design is similar to our don't-do-this example in the Hillside Design Standards and Guidelines. So can you elaborate on why you did not take any of our direction, or why you feel that that fits into our don't-do-this?
As I recall, our peer architect, Larry, Leonard Cannon, he pointed out that he applauded this design, so it fits over there. However, don't do that, because he referred to Hillside Guideline, that one of the pictures looked like a three-story coming down. I would say this different location probably has a different result in terms of the appearance. So I cannot make a good judgment or respond to Larry's statement, don't do this. It's hard for me to guess what he, the meaning is, but we tried to localize the building and reflected the local conditions. That's the best I can explain. I don't want to compare two different locations, a different house. That one was taken from other pictures, which is not on this site. And we trying to respect the site, because we be designed as something on the top of the, not really top the hill, but within the L R D A, unfortunately, L R D A, we have a little percentage go over. However, present, compared with the design in two-oh-eleven, we are only fifty percent encroachment into the L R D A. It was stated on the, our justification letter. So I don't want to, I, it's hard for me to compare two different pictures, saying this, don't do that. I trying to do the design which is linear, less line, longer than the one in two-oh-eleven. We have in and out indentation of the elevation. So Larry said, "This is a good design," is, he accepted. But finally, he pointed out to that picture, which in the Hillside Guideline, that don't do not do that. The comment that, I don't want to say I disagree, but it's hard for me to give you the better explanation as far as my design is concerned. Hopefully, you get what I say.
Commissioner Badami.
Thank you for that, and if I could ask one more question.
Go ahead.
With our concerns that weren't addressed, and that is the L R D A that you just brought up.
Right.
So typically, we don't like to give exceptions for the L R D A, and I'm looking for your compelling reason why you didn't want to follow our direction in not needing an exception to the L R D A without. an exception to the L RDA without referring to, well, gee, the application in 2011 had that. I mean, what's your justification other than that?
Certainly, of course, after April 11 meeting, I discussed with owner, can we shrink the whole thing? Apparently, we look into two different time, design two different, not two different, very similar footprint. We realized that after a thorough study, we found that 2011 was approved by commissioner. And I feel that that would be justifiable that if I still do that, but it's much less than percentage going beyond the RDA. Hopefully, you guys can accept that. Plus, the other factors that the house is smaller lengthwise, also height wise, we are two feet lower than they set up on the pad elevation, plus the driveway going down. Combine those consideration, I still went ahead using this original design without any change. That's my bottom line.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hanson?
So I wanted to get back to the question about the excavation. Now, there isn't a particular rule about how much can be excavated or not in our Hillside Design Guidelines, but if you think about it conceptually, you know, that's our hillside and if you're taking away 3,000 cubic yards, that's taking away part of our hillside. So if, I just want to make sure I'm kind of understanding the trade-offs in this. So it seems to me that now that we have the numbers from 2011, they had more outside the L RDA and that was probably, I'm going to guess because of their garage was on the side there and it probably went into the L RDA. So that, the main thing that you did, well, you tell me, what, what was the main things that you did to bring it further back from the, to less encroachment from the RDA, L RDA?
Certainly, RDA is one of the considerations accepted. Another thing is two architects must have two different design, even use the same location of the dirt. That's why it brought up one thing that this garage is about 90% outside the RDA, that's one taboo. However, they get less dirt back in 2011. Ours would tug in because we need, I think, elevator and connected to the garage easier instead of going outside, one story. It's hard to get elevator going up to the third floor. That's why this is the main concern about the design is going in, less encroachment in the RDA. However, on the impact side, it's more dirt removed.
Right. So, so you're agreeing with what I asked? Is it basically that's the trade-off? So did you consider yet another alternative, which would be reducing the mass of the house? Because, I mean, moving the garage underneath at the cost of all that extra excavation, did you consider any design that would include less massing of the house, which would clearly bring it more into the L RDA?
The RDA is very tiny, number one, and it's, and 20 feet setback from the side. So puts the whole thing only merely more than 3,000 square feet to design the home. Plus, owner has requested indoor swimming pool. And on the drawing board, it's very difficult to shrunk again and with other elements putting in the house. That's why we spent the six months to think about. That's why we present tonight with you with model. You can compare the house look from surface from the top. It's not that impact to the vision of a neighborhood or even to architect designer. So my bottom lines here, this is it. Okay? I, we consider in the past six months, we do the best we can. We found the elements here, elements there, we need incorporate. That's why 3D model shows relatively how big the mass there compared with the other thing, plus additional trees. Of course, we have cut the tree, but we're trying to freeze every tree. Those can, can be mitigated during construction. Overall, the picture is, we mimic the 2011 design, but with different design interior. That's why it came out with this kind of a-
I think you answered my question. Thanks.
Commissioner Birch?
I've heard you say a phrase twice and I want to make sure I'm understanding you clearly because I may interpret that phrase differently than you. Twice in relation to the massing of the house, you said, "That's my bottom line." I interpret that phrase to mean you're not going to consider negotiating for a smaller home to meet within certain requirements. Am I understanding you correctly or?
You are saying that maybe you assuming we didn't do the further study-
No, no.
-about the smaller scale of home.
That's not what I'm saying.
Or say, I strongly oppose this shrinking the house. Architect is architect, is not a magician. I'm telling you, compared with the previous approved plan and ours, I think we did a pretty good job. Okay? That's why, of course, we can put a 2,000 square feet a single dinky house on the top, but I think it's not that the owner required. Owner spent a million dollars bought this land. He, of course, he want to enjoy. Of course, want to meet the design guideline and hopefully-
You've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to maybe add a little clarity to the do not do this example with some text that's in the design guidelines and ask-
Yes.
-how we address that. So in that picture, one of, if you look at it, one of, one of the things that is apparent in that picture is the staircase. And so the staircase at the front, is that visible at all?
Basically, it's visible, but you don't see it's a stairway. You saw it's a piece of a sculpture because it rounded up like a spiral.
A spiral sculpture?
Right.
Okay. So, and that would be visible from the south side. So the houses on the ridge, there's about eight houses on the, on the south, on the ridge behind the Ming Quang.
That's down the bottom.
Right.
We could talk over the model.
Right. So, yeah, you could point that out to me. Where is that staircase located?
This is the house.
Steve, if you can grab the microphone. Bring the microphone.
Use this one.
Basically, understanding the model, setting up a few structures.
Could you just show me where that staircase is located?
Okay. This is the house, staircase here, can you see that?
Yes.
And this is a rounded up, like a spiral one. If you see, somebody can see that, if compared with a house, maybe it's visible.
Well, my question, and I think I asked before, is is it visible from the south ridge where there's about eight or 10 homes at a higher elevation?
Actually, orientation wise, this is south. This is, this is the north, right? Correct?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Take the mic, take the mic, please. Sir, take the mic.
Yeah, Steve never go to this side. I go to this side by myself with their director and we walk from here all the way to there. The only spot, it's here, it can see the top of the story pool right now, only the top part. Even for my guests, they cannot see the stair at all so far from this side. We went down and go up and we tried to visit, make sure, you know, everything's okay. The only spot is here.
From, from that near distance?
Between these two houses.
But the adjacent ridge, the south ridge-
Yeah, across the street.
No, not just across, on the hill that's behind it.
No, because this is the highest spot they have. It cannot be higher.
Okay, maybe I was mistaken. I went, looked from the story pole, so it-
Yeah, only see we can story pool on the top little bit. I would like to say maybe about five to six feet of the story pool.
Okay. So my question about the staircase, staircase is specifically called out in the residential design guidelines, a large visible staircase. How would you explain this and so that it is in compliance with the Hillside Design Guidelines that say, avoid overhanging decks, large staircases, and patios formed by retaining walls that make buildings appear more massive?
All right. Thank you for citing that section because I don't remember every little detail about this. The only thing I can explain it to you, this stairway is only three feet wide. It's curved. Only three feet because of this situation of the house, everything. Only allow me to three feet. And it was not exposed to eye. It's, it's enclosed by the wall, which is stucco wall. And it's blended into the house. And this house, it's over width of that thing, I don't think is more than eight feet wide. Because of the curvature, I'm talking the diameter, if you can imagine what I'm saying. So number one, it's kind of a route. It's not a builder, increase the massing. And it's floating in the air from the first floor to the second floor. Okay?
I'm wondering if we could put this exhibit up AS dash two sheet on the plan?
Plus, we do not have any balcony in between. So people using, residents use that stairway. They jump here, going there quickly, during, within fraction of a minute, I guess. So there's no way you can stand there to overlooking the vat, the view down there.
So if you, if you look at the bottom, that is the south side there?
Yeah.
I believe, there are the stairs. Those are outside the footprint?
Yes, actually, outside-
Those stairs there.
-RDA. This is a considerable going up here.
And those stairs, those are outside of the footprint of the house, correct?
Correct.
And what is the width of that? It's more than three feet, right?
That's what. I don't, probably plus one, that I would have said maximum five feet. The wall, the stairway there is three feet, 42 inches, three and a half, three, three. I don't think it's a large one.
The width of that curve, though, is considerably larger than three feet. That has to be at least-
Oh, you mean-
-10 or 12 feet.
Yeah, this whole thing, of course, it bend here.
From here?
So from here to here.
Here.
Three, probably 12 feet. You're right.
Right. So, you know, relative to the front of the house, it looks to me like a large staircase.
Looking from top, we know this is stair going down, going up. When you look in the model there, 3D, it's a floating and that spiraled up. It's hard to visualize that's the stairway, but that's the best I can deliver for outdoor stairway.
Thank you.
Without any cover.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions for the speaker? Commissioner Genov?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One following Commissioner Hudes's questions about the stairway. The, as far as I can ascertain from the design, the reason why you have such a massive front staircase is because you've, you've created the main entrance to the home on the second story rather than conventionally on the first story.
Because?
Or what you're calling the mid-level cellar plan.
Steel cellar.
Since the mid-level cellar plan on the south elevation is actually not cellar, but it's, it's-
Yes.
It's open.
Living space.
Had you considered at any time switching the family room and the, switching configuration of the home so that your, your living areas, your entertaining areas are on the first story such that you can eliminate that, that large front facing possibly objectionable staircase?
Eternal rearrangement, I don't have answer now, but I think main focus you are concerned, it's the blockness of the stairway compared with, look like 12 feet. Certainly, we can re-adjust it later for, just for the link between first floor and the second floor, which is mid-level and the top level. As far as the switching interior is not easy to discuss tonight.
Just, my only question was whether that had been considered because that drives the need for this massive staircase. And one of the issues with the staircase, although from the front elevation, I agree that you don't see the stairs. You may only see, you know, some stucco, but it's still a very, just looking at it without any other features, it just looks like a mass of stucco, a massive concrete. So it, it might be advantageous to, to remove the staircase and however you can. And you've said you'd consider that and, or that wouldn't be for tonight, but I do have a second question.
Go ahead.
So relative to the garage and its placement underneath the house, so as Commissioner Hanson alluded to, there's a big trade-off here. You're excavating and so you've got a large cut and fill issue by putting it under there. That keeps it within, almost within the L RDA, but not. And it also, the design creates this massive three-story elevation on the west side of the home, which is possibly objectionable to the neighbors down below. The, the previous design, which had the garage outs, more in the L RDA, that trade-off says that we don't do as much cut and fill as you have acknowledged. The other benefit to keeping the garage outside the footprint of the house is, it appears to me that the driveway excavation can also be shorter if you pull the garage toward the, toward the front of the, of the south elevation rather than moving it kind of up and toward the back of the house. Did you consider looking at the trade-off of cut and fill versus for both the house with the garage underneath the house and the extent of the driveway to get to the garage where it's located? So pulling, did you do any trade-offs to show what, what you could save in terms of the cut and fill?
Possible. However, with we, if we ever do like a previous design pulling out, so you have nothing on the top, maybe it look like one story. And then the driveway, probably the length from a bottom to top will be shortened. So 15 degrees will be destroyed possibly, up to maybe 16, 17. And because there's a rule between, you know, that the length and the height ratio, that's why engineer and I decide 15 feet because of fire department and from the last kind of direction. So we kept this driveway length so that we can achieve 15% plus 5% to turn around that area. It's, this garage location, it's a, it's a function of the driveway slope and turn around, turn around and take a large area. And unfortunately, I tell you that design, fire department requires some more turnaround area in, starting in June this year. It's, and we had a very difficult time to get through even this time because it was okay when we presented in April and it just because slopes higher. So when we lower down, fire department say, you need a huge turnaround, which cannot be fit here. So if we ever redesign that, we probably have to follow the new rule, which taking place, oh, I think it's June towards this year.
So you're assuming that the entrance to the garage remains on the side of the house rather than the front?
Still on the side. It really suitable for this kind length with the driveway, keep kept as a 15% slope. If we ever change it in the front, I believe the driveway- If we ever change it in the front, I believe the driveway length will be shortened. It should be, so I need more, the slope will be higher. And then it trigger the new rule for the fire departments to approve this design.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Hudes.
Hi, I had some questions about the retaining wall, particularly along the driveway.
Yes.
So this is, some of this is new, correct? The driveway design is new and the cut and fill is new?
Yes, basically, the footprint of the driveway is still same. We lowered down from nineteen point five percent to fifteen, so.
What's the impact been on the retaining wall? Could you explain to me the height of the retaining wall along the driveway? And whether that's changed and what that height is?
Basically, retaining wall height used to be, as Shine mentioned, it's fourteen point two percent height from grade to there. Now cutting down to a little over eight feet. So the drop is about a little more than five feet, which is, I think it's quite a bit impact.
So there was an improvement, or there was a reduction?
Reduction.
In the peak part of the retaining wall? Has the retaining wall gotten longer as a result?
No, same.
Okay, so there's something in the guidelines about this on page eighteen and nineteen of the Hillside Design Guidelines. And there was also something in the previous design using a terrace retaining wall?
Yes.
So that you wouldn't have a single wall of more than six feet or eight feet?
Correct, and we have a terrace retaining wall.
Okay, so the retaining wall is terrace and what, and the height of that is, in total, what's the height? Of the two, two or three terraces?
Only two, because our design, it's if you.
Two, okay.
Yeah, only two.
What is, what's the height of the two?
The total height, I think it's eight feet. If the one combined it together, let me see, right, I have that sheet there. Let me see. I need to put my reading glass. The sheet C three, if you share with us to read that thing. It's hard to see here. This is five-two plus, I guess, section twelve, it's a pretty tall, two-to-one, two-to-one. Then this is a.
C three, you're referring to?
Yeah, C three.
Yeah.
It's a section of various sections of through the retaining wall.
Right.
Over the garage, I mean, the driveway. You can see the highest one, I would say twelve, twelve plus twenty, which is almost in the section, middle section of the drawing. And also twelve plus zero. And the rest is not that high, except this one's pretty tall. Let me see how tall it is. Five-twenty, ten feet, two, four, six, eight, ten, okay, two feet. Two, four, six, eight, yeah, okay. So if you look at this one, twelve plus twenty, as well as with theta one, that's a revision number. If you read that thing to your left-hand side, it's a scale of the height, five-hundred, five-ten, five-twenty, five-thirty. So each scale, each line represented two feet. So if you look at the intersection of a third and the height of the black retaining wall, that's eight feet. You can count from there, two, which?
Looks like ten feet.
Yeah, no, ten feet is to the footing. Expose this.
Oh, I see.
You see what I mean?
Yes.
So five-ten would be two feet, five-twelve, four feet, five-fourteen, six feet, to five-fourteen, sixteen. Then you have a two-to-one slope for landscaping.
Right.
That's eight feet we're talking about.
Okay, so that's the eight feet.
That's eight feet.
So what's the length? I mean, is it roughly two hundred feet of the driveway?
In the middle portion, if, would you turn around looking at the plant behind you, showing that over the section? You see that retaining wall there? You can see the retaining wall, which is this picture. Yes, that's overall view of the retaining wall along the driveway. The highest one, eight feet right there, and.
So is that roughly two hundred feet?
Not that two hundred feet, length, probably, I would say probably in the neighborhood, how many feet? Twenty feet. And Sam was right, I don't remember that. But we reduce quite a bit, at least reduce five feet. Oh, the overall, it's not eight feet all the way. It varies from a zero, two, three, four, five, six to eight.
Right, so I'm making another point, not about so much the height, but the length of this.
Oh, length of the driveway?
The length of the retaining wall.
Let me see, do I have idea, length of not two hundred feet? I would say maybe a hundred feet or less. And it's hard for me to read because there are no scale.
Well, my point is, and I want to get to the design guidelines. So on page eighteen, it says, "Hard edges left by cut and fill operations shall be given a rounded appearance that closely resemble the natural contours of the land." And on page nineteen, it says, "Manufactured slopes adjacent to driveways and roadways shall be modulated by birmingham regrading and landscaping to create visually interesting and natural appearing streetscapes. However, preservation of trees and elimination of retaining walls is a priority." So could you maybe explain to me whether you've considered a more rounded appearance, a more, a more natural way to handle the grading on the driveway? And whether you've, yeah, first, whether you've considered that? And then how the amount of retaining walls is in compliance with our guidelines regarding this item?
First of all, in reply to your question, or from a housing, I mean, the Hillside Guideline, we try very hard to design this driveway, follow the contour line. If you look at that sheet, C two, that's contour line, which is the light background. It's a sloping down. This driveway, it's kind of follow the contour line. That's the most reasonable way to design the driveway. Instead of going from direct, going directly up there, which is almost impossible. That's why there is a, first of all, it's a follow the contour line to design that. The second one, when you see wrong, we try to use this allen block, which is visually, it's a, instead of solid concrete. So when you look at that, it's a pretty attractive block, lay it up with the geograde, whatever construction required. Then, instead of a concrete. And secondly, we do have a landscaping kind of tuck on the top of this lower retaining wall. So visualize that, it's a blend into the woods, number one. And because a block always looks natural than concrete, concrete is, you know, newly created stuff. That's why from day one, when we designed, we proposed the allen block and landscaping and follow the curve, follow the contour line to design that. And also, bottom line I want to add, if you look at that drawing there, on the top that, building department requires guard. They're thinking that car will veer into, and also protect the pedestrian, which is forty-two inch high, made of wood. Maybe the wood cutting, I mean, made from the wood, the trees cutting down, okay? So anyway, that sheet is, really tells the most story.
Thank you very much.
Other questions for the speaker? I have one, sir. About thirty minutes ago, Vice Chair Hudes was talking about the picture that says, "Don't do this", and was going over some of the text. And I think you kindly said you weren't familiar with all the pieces in the, in the guidelines or didn't recall them immediately. Did you know he was reading from Larry Cannon's letter? My question is, have you read it? And, you know, he says this house looks like the don't-do house, but then he continues with other concerns. Ensure that the development does not dominate, but blends visually and achieves harmony with the natural. And he goes on and on and on. This is not the guidelines, per se, this is the town architect expressing his concerns, which seem not to have been addressed. Can you help me with that?
Okay, maybe I misinterpreted that. It's Larry saying the design, it's acceptable, blending to the hillside. Then during the last meeting, was point out that do not do that. And I went home and looked at that thing. That's why I stated clearly that the whole, the two location, two different design. Our design is really kind of a blend into the whole thing. And Larry kind of echoed that, except he pointed out, do not do this. Sometimes maybe I misinterpreted that. I thought, you know, it was, it's kind of illustration that from the housing, I mean, the hillside, he just warning that do not do that. But on the contrary, that he said this design acceptable for this location. If you look at, probably read the front pages, if I recall correctly. Maybe, I really cannot interpret better than that. I thought it's acceptable architectural design, except I still, I remember that, don't do not do that.
Thank you. I also had the opportunity to watch the entire April eleventh tape.
Okay.
And, and the commission was talking about, the L R D A was talking about the massing, just jumping out, out of the hillside. And the staff report says the applicant has not revised the design or citing of the proposed residence, not one inch over the L D R A, nor has there been any revision to the massing. And you said to a commissioner before, that is my bottom line. Why did you not give some considerations to the guidance that was pretty clear?
Because we went back to drawing board. We compared two designs, one in two eleven, one this year. We found that we didn't, we did a design which is, I don't want to superior to that, but at least it's massing-wise, it's smaller than that one. And that one was kind of approved. So that's why we, we thought that the major thing is the driveway and landscaping, and the overall design still suitable. And because compared with the previous design, that's why we came out to say, we don't want to change it, I think. That's my decision with owner.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing. Thank you for your comments. And we are going to take a ten-minute break before we begin our discussions. Will you resume, please? I've closed the public portion of the public hearing and turn now to my commissioners to see if they have questions for staff, wish to comment on the application, or wish to make a motion. Commissioner Birch.
I would like to ask a question of staff and then make a statement, if that's acceptable to the chair.
Yes.
I know the answer to this, but just for the sake of the meeting. We know that there was an application that was approved many years ago. I'm sure this commission has changed faces many times. Mr. Mullen or Mr. Paulson, when people come in a multitude of years later, do you advise them to compare their current design against a previously approved design? Or do you advise them to look at the hillside guidelines or the current residential guidelines and design to that?
Typically, we would speak to them or direct them towards using the existing planning documents as their basis for evaluation. In this case, the comparison came out of conversations with the applicant and the planning commission.
Right.
And I would just add that since that previous action, none of the planning documents have changed.
Great, thank you.
And to clarify, this is, in fact, the new application. This is de novo.
This is a new application.
Brand-new application. Commissioner?
So I have a couple of comments that I thought I would put out for discussion to my fellow commissioners. I think we all recognize that here in town, there are some extremely difficult buildable lots, and we have a lot of discussion around many of them. And then with this application, were there one particular item we were focused on, such as encroaching past the LRDA, or simply the excess excavation? I could probably be having a simpler conversation right now, but it is just the quantity of exceptions that are being requested. And I'm not even going to touch, you know, all the trees and everything that's happening, because I feel like those are problems that are being driven by the exceptions that are being made. I have a very difficult time approving this application. You know, we, as was brought up by my fellow commissioners, the guidelines ask us to stay away from such things as visible stairs. I've looked at multitudes of elevations that actually show the property from two points. It is a very visible feature. We have one very prominent three-story facade, which is visible from neighbors, which is very specifically brought up in our guidelines. We already discussed the exceeding the cut and fill outside the LRDA. We have retaining wall issues. I just, I feel like standalone, we could probably be coming to a compromise here, but it feels like it's just too much for me to consider this. But I'm open to conversation.
Other comments? Commissioner?
Well, I mentioned earlier, you know, at the end of the day, if you do compare this to the proposal that was made in 2011, which did encroach more on the LRDA, this is all, it comes down to a trade-off. And even though technically the square footage might be less from this proposal to the proposal that was made in 2011, the trade-offs are much bigger in terms of what it looks like in terms of massing. And I think it all comes down to moving the garage, which is the main thing that was done to do less encroachment into the LRDA. And then you had to trade that off for excavation of more than three times of the amount of dirt. And I'm going to go back to my comment that I made earlier, that even though, even though we don't have a specific guideline that says this is the maximum amount of dirt you can excavate, we do have cut and fill guidelines, and we have the retaining wall guidelines and all that stuff. And as Commissioner Birch mentioned, these are a lot of exceptions. So I find it hard to accept that this trade-off is giving us a better solution than the one that got approved in 2011. And I do recognize this is de novo application, but I feel like this can be better and less impactful to the hillsides and to the views by looking at some kind of different solution than the one that has been proposed.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm very sympathetic to this property and therefore the applicant. Something should be built there. The difficulty, I guess, is I agree with the statement that perhaps where the garage not under the house, some of the problems would be solved. Now, if I were the applicant, I'd say, well, wait a minute. The last time somebody considered this, they didn't want it, they didn't want it in front of the house, because that was in the LRDA. So we did that in response, and I understand that. But we have a lot of moving parts on this. I don't get the feeling that perhaps our guidelines were understood by the applicant, and therefore our questioning tonight, in many respects, was a waste of time. Because you ask somebody a question, which is a narrow question, coming from what we know to be our guidelines, and you get an answer, which is a broad question, saying, this is the best we could do. That won't cut. We don't have the right to say, in this case, we're going to ignore the guidelines, because you tell us that's the best you can do. So I'm suggesting that if, in fact, this is not approved this evening, a new view of this be looked at, our, people understand better what we do here, they understand better what our regulations are. These are not impossible regulations. But tonight, I was concerned that the parties did not understand what we do and did not understand our guidelines. I think the idea of what you want to build is good, however the way it's coming down, we don't have much we can do. If it were a question of would we approve the garage, even though it intruded on the LRDA, you can make an exception if you, if the evidence is there. But when you have so many exceptions, at some point, you say, well, we can't just do all these exceptions. When somebody says that our guidelines, say you step something down the hill, and we hear that as a suggestion, it isn't a suggestion. You can find a reason why it perhaps ought not to apply, but you just don't say, that's the best we could do. Because if that's the best you can do, it won't be approved. So you have to either comply with our regulations, or you have to make a convincing case on one or two of them, why you should not have to comply with that and why it's better. That was not done this evening. And to that extent, I feel very bad for the applicant. Because I don't think we're sitting here saying, we don't want you to build a house there. That is a very, very difficult lot. You're addressing it, and you want to do it intelligently and sensitively. I think you can do that. But I don't think you can do it the way you're doing it tonight. So I don't know if that's helpful to you, but I'm just trying to tell you from my sitting here, listening to all the questions, that is the impression I get. And I merely ask you to think about what I've just told you, because I think it could be helpful.
Commissioner Badami.
I would like to add to what the commissioners stated very well, is that not only do we think you may not have understood our hillside design guidelines, but that we actually granted a continuance and gave you direction, which for the most part was ignored and disregarded by the commissioners. That being said, for the reasons cited, you know, the LRDA, the grading, the cut and fill, the three-story elevation appearance to the neighborhood, the massing, you put it all together, and it just doesn't meet the goals and intent of the hillside design guidelines and standards.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hudes.
So with regard to the LRDA encroachment and the massing, I think this, it's been said this is a difficult, challenging lot to build and to design. It's considered a buildable lot by the town. And actually, in looking at the tape from the April 2011 application, the question was asked about the garage. And the architect said, if you push the garage into the house, it would create a three-story elevation. And so they chose not to do that. And the challenge is, you have all of these variables and moving parts that have been described, but the one constant seems to be the square footage of living space. And it seems to me that that fundamentally needs to be addressed to fit into the LRDA and the guidelines and the massing and the three-story issues with the design. And so I, you know, I think a number of people have taken ways of designing this, but I don't think, you know, at least it hasn't been demonstrated to me that it can be done without reducing the square footage. And it appears that that was the attempt, and that's why it wasn't redesigned. But I, this is a lot that is buildable, but the square footage can't be a constant. It has to be one of the variables as well, I believe, in order to fit something that meets our guidelines onto this site.
Other comments? A short one. I watched the April 11th tape, and Commissioner O'Donnell made an outstanding point on the road, because we're all concerned that it's, the slope is off, the walls are too high, this and that. He made the comment that, you know, this has been approved for building something. And in order to get to that something, there has to be a road. And so what I heard was, here's a good reason to allow some variance on the guidelines with respect to that road. They have to have a road. And tonight, I was heartened that they did make changes to the road. But I'd made my mind up that somehow I was going to allow that road, because it has to be there to get to the house. That's a requirement. The mass of the house and the concerns we have with the house, those are elective. And I'd be hard-pressed to provide waivers for those, because that's a choice that the applicant makes. The road is not a choice. There has to be a road. But the house, those are elective excesses outside our standards, and I probably wouldn't approve those waivers too much. That's my only point. Do I see a motion? Commissioner Birch.
I just want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't going to do that. There are obviously three things one can do at this point. I think we're really only talking about two of them. One would be to, again, allow a continuance. But that would presuppose that what we're trying to get across tonight is being received to give them a chance to come back. The other would, of course, just be to deny, because I know that we all would like the applicant to be able to build a home there.
Yes.
Personally, were I the applicant, I would ask for a continuance, or I would accept the continuance. But since, but that's merely a suggestion. So I'm just saying, when the motion is made, we could consider a motion to continue. Now, the problem we always have is we don't know whether the applicant is going to be sympathetic to that motion. Sometimes we ask the applicant by opening again and asking, which we might want to do here. Because if the applicant says, no, this is the best we can do, and we're going to peel this, that's fine, too. I'm trying to be helpful, and my suggestion is there be a continuance, so they could address what we're saying to them tonight. But if they just feel we're, they don't agree with what we're saying, or any part thereof, then a denial would be helpful to them.
Let's see what Commissioner Birch has.
I'm open to, we, in the past, we've briefly opened the public portion to ask that one question. I don't know how our town attorney feels about that. I would be open to doing that before I make a motion.
Well, I would say that that is definitely a possibility, and just keeping it short to yes or no question. Would you prefer?
Do you have a question you want to pose, Commissioner Birch?
Are you going to open the public portion?
If you have a question.
I do. I have a question I'm going to pose.
I'm going to reopen the public portion of the public hearing and ask the applicant to come back up to the podium.
Mr. Pan? He's the boss. Maybe he doesn't want it. That's okay, too.
So my question to the applicant, to be, so I can be specific, and it's going to be a yes or no question, is we have in front of us tonight to deny or to continue. Are you open to continuing this item for you and your team to further review the design guidelines and look at, to make adjustments to meet more within the residential hillside design guidelines?
Okay, yeah, I'm definitely open.
I can only take a yes or no.
I'm definitely trying to open to changes, okay? That's no question, because I need to build a house on it, you know? So we are, according to today's meeting, I'm probably.
I only get a yes or a no.
This way it's not working?
I think he's saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm closing the public portion of the public hearing again, and looking to commissioners for motion. Commissioner Birch.
I'm going to start the motion, and I believe my fellow commissioners are probably going to want to weigh in with some aspects. You can go ahead and be seated while we work through this. I'm going to make a motion to continue architectural and site application S-16-054 at 248 Jared Lane, requesting approval for construction of a new single-family residence and removal of large protected trees on a vacant lot, property zoned HR1, APN 53234071, to a date certain, which I will ask staff to provide. to a date certain, which I will ask staff to provide.
I would suggest we continue it at least until November 14th, and if the applicant is not done with those revisions and staff has not had time to review them, then we will simply continue to another future date certain.
Which is what we did last time.
Correct.
That's acceptable. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. And the reasons for the continuance, if I may, to add to the motion, because I think we've had a lot of discussion, are this particular, in noting that this particular property is difficult to build on, there are a number of exceptions to be made. Personally, I agree with the comment Commissioner O'Donnell had made in the last meeting, that a road has to be built there. So I'm, and I'm sympathetic to the fire marshal requirements to the road and the turnarounds and the things like that. So I'm going to only focus my comments to the home, that it be more sympathetic to the hillside residential guidelines in term of massing, in terms of having a three-story facade visible from other residents, in reviewing the front visible exterior stairwell, and general overall massing within, I'm sorry, move the massing within the LRDA. But I am open to additional comments that my fellow commissioners may have to the motion. Do we need to make a second before that happens? Okay.
Do we have a second to the motion? Commissioner O'Donnell, seconds. Discussion. I was listening to you, Commissioner Birch. If the LRDA is respected, that may cure the massing problem, and so that's a hint. Other comments? Commissioner Janoff?
I think I disagree that if the LRDA is to be strictly respected, it might exacerbate the massing, particularly if the garage remains under, and we still have that three-story facade. I guess I'm thinking about the trade-off between the, being completely within the LRDA and excavating versus outside the LRDA with a lighter footprint on the hillside. So I think I would like to see, I would like to see in the motion that pulling the garage out from under the house in order to have a lighter impact on the hillside be a part of the considerations.
Yeah, I could add that comment without it being a requirement, and then perhaps what I could also reference is Sheet P4 in the staff report, which does show a comparison between the two with the garage. Perhaps that reference would be helpful for the applicant.
I would add, as long as the pulling of the garage doesn't further violate the LRDA, there's not a lot of room up there. Commissioner O'Donnell?
That's the tricky point, and I think the trade-off, which is what it is, if you want to drop the bulk and the mass and the three-story aspect, at least based on what I've heard so far, you have to pull the garage out from underneath the house. Yes, that will encroach upon the LRDA more, but that is something that we can consider and we can grant. Where we had problems tonight wasn't that we had one discrete matter we had to deal with. We had a bunch of things. And secondly, I don't think the applicant seemed to focus on what we have to do, and now will, I'm sure. So I think the maker of the motion just said to consider but not require, because that would be their choice. If they can figure out some way to get the three-story look out of there, God bless them. I don't see how they can, so we're saying to them, you want to consider whether you want to pull the garage out from that house, but we're not requiring that.
I agree with the earlier comments, Commissioner O'Donnell, that the applicant may not have understood. And so I'd look to staff to go over Larry Cannon's letter again and what hillside houses look like, spiral staircases, extended terraces, and, no. Larry's letter's a good place to start. You don't have to read the whole book on guidelines. Wouldn't hurt, but Larry sort of captured it on his last page, the last page of his letter, so. Vice Chair Hudes.
So I'm a little concerned that we're being a little too vague on some things. I don't think we had good results the last time we did a continuance with regard to one of the most important items, which was the siding and bulk and mass of the house. So I would suggest a few more specific requirements to the continuance for, that I think might lead us to a better result by being a little more specific. So if I could list off a few of those.
Go ahead. Yes.
As I was just going to say, please, your suggestions are welcome.
So with regard to the LRDA encroachment, I would suggest trying to be in compliance with the guidelines that say minimal encroachment, and that might mean adjusting the square footage of the house itself so that it could be reduced. The second would be with regard to trees, again, being a little more specific. I would reduce or eliminate the number of however-intent trees, which I counted as 27 trees that are in the cloud, and to be specific about whether those trees would remain or not. Separately, I will provide a list when I get a legible drawing to staff so that they can look at the tree, the other trees as well. That's not part of what I would need to be in the motion, but for me, to eliminate or minimize the number of indeterminate trees, which were on there. The third thing would be to eliminate the staircase, because that's not in compliance with the guidelines. That says no large staircases. And so those, to me, are requirements. The other one that I would add would be on the retaining walls. I find, yes, we need to have a drive to get to the house, and so there needs to be retaining walls, but I would, again, like the applicant to try to get to what is in the guidelines, where cut-and-fill shall be given a rounded appearance that closely resembles the natural contours of the land, and to eliminate retaining walls as much as possible. And so there are some examples in the guidelines themselves about the retaining walls and ways to do that, and while allen block is more appealing than concrete, I think that there are other stone surfaces, including one that I saw in the previous approved application using rock, that was much more natural-looking. So this is something that I think would be important, is to attempt to get a rounded and more natural appearance to the very long amount of retaining walls, whether it's 100 feet or 200 feet.
Those are acceptable. If I may make just a couple of comments to them, however, I agree on the 27 trees. I definitely think it needs to be a more determined analysis on those, and I would ask that if it's part of the return application, that both the arborist and the civil engineer be present to discuss these. And then on the retaining walls, to clarify, a more rounded appearance, we, dirt is heavy, and it pushes outward, and sometimes a rounded appearance means that there's more erosion. Are you comfortable if that rounded appearance is achieved via stone or another type of, you're not asking that it just be rounded dirt. I wanted to be sure of that.
Yeah, I don't think it's feasible to just move the dirt, given the slope of that hillside, but something that is more rounded and more natural than the allen block that's currently proposed.
Okay. Those are acceptable to me. Commissioner?
Acceptable to me as the secondor.
Good. The point about the staircase?
I had actually made a point about the staircase in my motion also, so yes.
Again, it's covered on Larry Cannon's last page, the staircase, the overhanging, the patio. Commissioner Hanson?
I didn't have anything to add to the motion, but I was just going to comment relative to some of the comments we got from the public, and at their last hearing, when we had the facility across the street that was worried about peering down. If you took all the suggestions that are being made in this motion and took them to heart and reviewed the guidelines and the input from the consulting architect and really did reduce the size of the house, you'll find that your neighbors aren't going to have that much to say about it, because it'll be smaller and it'll be harder for them to see, and you won't have to do as much for the facility across the street. So I think there will be multiple benefits in terms of not having to appease as many people, and then you'll have a house that will be more, much more in compliance with our town regulations.
Further comment? Seeing none, I'll call, well, do staff have a sense of what we're asking for? You can produce this for us as a motion?
That will be up to the applicant to produce on revisions, but yes, this has been recorded, so we have no problem.
So you'll be able to get all this into a motion. Therefore, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye. Posed, passes unanimously. Given that we have a continuance, Mr. Paulson, there would be no rights of appeal at this point?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I'll move on to other business. Are there any burning commissioner matters that anyone wishes to address? I will turn to the Director of Community Development for his report.
Great, thank you. So quickly, the planning commission and the town council will hold a joint study session workshop on Monday to kind of kick off the general plan update, get an overview of that process, and then probably receive some input on potential issues and opportunities to kind of, as we move forward through this process, for the general plan update. We've also set a, the first community workshop, which will be an opportunity for the community to come in, in a workshop setting, and that will be October 17th. Currently, that is scheduled for 6:30 in the, at the JCC on Oka Road. And so those are the two closest general plan update topics. Lastly, we are, the town is accepting applications for adult commissions and committees until October 26th. We have a couple of planning commissioners who will need to get their applications in if they're interested in reapplying. But if you know other folks who are interested, I think there's openings on virtually every board and commission currently with the town.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. This meeting is adjourned.